I'd like to call the June 27, 2023 Planning Commission's special meeting to order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom, online by visiting www.cityofarcada.org and following the "Live Meetings" link at the bottom of the city's homepage, or on the city's YouTube channel. If you are attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest-to-real-time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. The first item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as "gudene," meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Next is roll call. Staff, will you please call roll?
Yeah, Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
Commissioner Yodowitz?
Here.
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Vice Chair Tagney?
Here.
And Chair Davies?
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Mayer is absent.
Thank you very much. We are joined today by Community Development Department staff, Director David Loyah and Deputy Director Jennifer Dart. Next, we will have public comment. During this time, people may make comments about items that are on the agenda. We will not be opening public comment on each item individually. If you have comments about items that are listed on our agenda today, please line up now behind the lectern. If you are on Zoom and you wish to make oral communications on matters that are on today's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the "Raise Hand" icon on the right side of your screen, or by pressing star nine if you are calling in. For those on Zoom, when it is your turn to speak, the clerk will unmute you. With that, I'd like to open public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment. Feel free to state your name for the record. May we have the first speaker, please?
Good evening. On your PDF page 585, Policy N-3: Transportation Noise Sources and Levels. N3B, Transportation Noise. Transportation noise sources should be periodically measured and significantly increased/mitigated so that not to exceed the levels specified in the table. N2, For Outdoor Activity, Our Interior Spaces Are Existing Receptive. This is all language that you're eliminating. So you're basically taking state law and decided to eliminate all of this, and this is also what I've been asking for the last year and a half for the City Council and the Planning Commission and the staff and the city leaders to address. So, I don't know what to say. Totally unacceptable that you're just like everything that I wrote and that has basically been acknowledged by the city that is a problem, and waiting a whole year and a half for you to address this problem. And so what do you do is you just cross out all the language was state law. So, I'm not, wouldn't be surprised if a single one of you is going to back me up on this, but I am now, I'm at a point now, I'm taking notes on who is on what side of this because I'm going to go to the state of California, and I'm sure they're going to back me on this and not, you know, allow this language just to be eliminated. So I hope that you are wise enough tonight to not go along with this and cross out all this language. And it's not just on that part, it's on page 588 and every, I mean, it's just unbelievable. This is how you're dealing with the noise element? This is how you're responding? And I have to say, it's not only this, it's from public safety from the standpoint, I've been here and I've never seen anybody stop for any, I mean, for speeding, they'll flip their car over in front of my house, they'll walk out, crawl out of their car and say how high they are. Nothing is done, so your public safety is a joke. I mean, you're making no attempt whatsoever, you're making no attempt from the noise element, you're making no attempt from the environmental aspect. There are so many things that I know because I've had jobs that I had to deal with, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. It's like you have no street sweeping going on for the last five years. I've lived in Marin, I've lived in Sonoma, I lived in Orange County, I lived in Santa Barbara County, I've lived in Nevada City. It's like clockwork work, they clean their streets, they, and why do they do this? So that we don't have all this garbage going down our store drains into our wetlands, into our bays. And what has been done here? Nothing. We seem to have people that have backgrounds in this area, but they don't seem to make this a priority. So I'm just waiting for when the, when the reality is that you're going to actually address these problems instead of bearing a 600 and some page PDF that's kind of saying that you're doing everything when you're not. So wake up and start doing the right thing.
Thank you for your comments. Come on down.
Hi, my name is Carolyn, I'm a long-term, longtime resident, I just finished a hike, so I'm a little out of breath, but I'm a longtime resident of Humboldt County and Arcata. I don't want to be hostile, okay? And I, but I have to say this, and the frustrating part about coming to the meetings is that it just seems like we aren't listened to as a public. It seems like different commissions are against the height limits, different things, and that just still stays in the planning. But I'm going to say that I'm, what I'm really here to talk about is the K and L Street situation. And there's, first of all, I just need to point out, there's a very, really good road to get through Arcata quickly, and it's called Highway 101. And there's access to it from the north and the south. And so the idea of, for instance, turning K Street into a truck corridor, I don't even understand the point of that. If a truck driver can't find 101, they shouldn't be driving a truck. There's plenty, there's, there's only one safe, totally safe bicycle route through town, and that is L Street and the paths, and that's also the only uninterrupted walking through town. It's safe for families, it's safe for people that are disabled. And so the idea of turning a quiet corridor that goes through an art center and through residential into a truck route or a one-way drive through town just seems like really poor planning. And so I would just really like to encourage you to work more on K Street and work more on routing traffic around town rather than straight through. I've, I've been in Arcata, oh God, I've lived on the coast for like 43 years. I've never had a problem. I know we're going to have a bigger population, but that's just a matter of training. In the UK, they give people over 60 a free bus pass and train pass anywhere. Maybe think about more bus passes for people. Let's see. So there's only real, really, except for the community center, there's only really one park, and that's the Plaza. And so the L Street Linear Park would be really a gift to the city. So I'm just hoping that you'll really consider that. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your comments.
Good evening, Patricia Cambianica. Yeah, I don't even know what to, to say anymore at these meetings. We've been encouraged to come, and we all read the agenda packets and pile through it and compile everything and do our research and spend hours and hours and hours of our time just to try to make Arcata better. And we're like, oh, welcome, we welcome your input, but all the input the, the public has been given, or the public has given to the City of Arcata, has been completely ignored. We were told there'd be solar shading models. Don't worry, your house will not be shaded. We came up with a solar shading model ourselves and got, somebody was, got really riled up, David Loyah was really upset with us and said, "No, no, this is all wrong. There'll be setbacks and step backs. Your house will not be shaded. Come to the recent Planning Commission, the past Planning Commission meeting, yes, our houses will be shaded, drastically shaded, 10-foot off of a property line and the back, sides of property line, the back property line will have zero setbacks or step backs." The community has, has asked for stopping at four stories. They asked that way back at, when, at the Town Hall meeting. Nothing was compiled at that. That was back in January of 2022. Nothing ever came of that. Overwhelmingly, we as a community group counted what the, the wishes of the community was. The city never did. They didn't count one sticker or one post-it note, but overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly, the citizens asked, "Stop at four stories." It wasn't even close. It wasn't anything, and actually, third came second place. And two-story, or three stories came second place, and two stories came third place. The Fire District, we don't know, there's supposed to be communications. We don't know if that's going to be remedied yet. Nothing has been given back to us. Oh, we're talking with Cal Poly, we're talking with the city, and we're talking with the Fire District. We have gotten no feedback on that. We got no feedback on the wastewater treatment. The location for that was supposed to be in Samoa across, the ideal location for relocating the wastewater treatment plant was across the street Samoa where soil science within the Gateway District. We brought that up repeatedly, eh, it got just swept under the rug. So what do we come here? Why do we come here and ask to be listened to? Why are we told that, oh, it's painful to listen to you? Oh, but come!
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, last week's, I think, what it seemed to trigger when your, your response to just even the idea of the enhanced step backs, it sort of triggered everything about the massing and how not giving an inch on things, and it, it starts to feel a little like the NRA. I mean, in this case, it's like if, sorry, but that's how I feel. It starts to feel a little bit like, well, if we give them a step back, they may want a story, you know? And I mean, it's just like, at some point in the, if you go into the Gateway draft itself, I mean, I mean, I just didn't understand the response to all that. GA9P, Human Scale Massing. Provide human scale and pedestrian-friendly building massing where large buildings are broken up into smaller volumes to fit in surrounding neighborhoods. GA9Q, Transition to Lower Intensity Uses. Require buildings to incorporate massing strategies to minimize impact on adjacent single-family homes. This is what was promised, and it seems like you guys are like taking out the chainsaw now. And then in, under GA9F, it's in red, I hope it's not being deleted, but I'm assuming it because it was a recommendation of the Energy Committee. GI9F, Solar Shading. Ensure new developments minimize solar shading to surrounding properties. So I'm just kind of asking you to kind of look back at everything we've been doing here. I, you know, the responses, I kind of feel like what Patricia said, there's really a lack of respect for the input. And we do a lot, I do a lot of research, I look into this, I look into, I look into the agenda packets, I look into a lot of different things, you know? Well, tonight was kind of hilarious, 613 pages, like a Mitchener novel, but it is just a bit of rerun of a lot of different things in there. So with, with that in mind, you know, I just ask you to, you know, pay attention to what, what's inputs come in, pay attention to what the community members are saying, and, and, you know, look at the draft. I mean, it seems to say those things, at least that was the promise. And on that last note, I feel like the L Street Linear Park, question mark, still out there in the couplet. I know, I see you also moving toward that and seeming to disregard a large population right now that's well over like 750 people who said, "No, we'd like to have a park." And just keep that in mind, too. I mean, I realize that your recommendations are recommendations, but I'm just not sure of this work. I always assume that you took the input, you incorporated it into it, and the choices were made after you put it all together. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Hi, hello, my name's Joanna McGarry, and I come here all the time. I'm not as in-depth, knowledgeable as many of these people who speak before me are or who will come after me, but I'm really concerned that what we are deciding now in this group, this demographic, and what is being proposed for the future, for the next generations, is something that is not going to be a livable, thrivable style of a community here in Arcata if we keep going up and keep cookie-cuttering things and take away open space and not get rid of cars. Before I came here, I was listening to NPR about the heat wave in Texas, and somebody was talking about it's obviously climate change, it's caused by fossil fuels. And if our community really wants to be in the vanguard and the cutting edge of progress for a livable future in our town, in our region, and in the world, we can really boldly go where no one else has gone yet and design our community livable. I've long felt that being more grounded as a community is more important and safer than going up in unstable ground with sea level rising and just the psychology sometimes of being isolated high up. So I'm a big fan of three stories and a functional rooftop when we think about design of future housing and keeping green space, you know, existing and broadening it even as we can, which means as I came over here, I took the path on L Street and really was thinking a lot about how, I went to school at Davis, took some planning classes and landscape architecture classes, and Davis has designed some amazing green belt paths that don't even allow cars. They're nowhere near, cars nowhere near those green belts. And I remember actually having a conversation with David Loyah and talking about how we could turn at least one of these areas like the L Street, hopefully Linear Park, into a really vibrant, green space, open space, livable space, transportable without a fossil-fueled vehicle. We really need to think livability for the younger people who apparently aren't coming here, and then they're going to say, "What did we allow to happen?" Or "What did they do?" And not think about us. So let's think about the future. Seven generations is what a lot of the native people think about, so let's make Arcata a live, a livable, thrivable place. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts.
Good evening, I'm Fred Wise. Over the past year, I've spoken with the city manager and with the planning commissioners about the possibility of a lawsuit against the city, not instigated by myself, but from people who I've spoken with, based on conversations that I've had with Arcata citizens over the last two weeks, and I regard this as unfortunate but inevitable. And if anyone wants to talk to me about that, I'm open to talking about it. In your current packet, the staff report says that the Transportation Safety Committee's recommendation is, and I quote, "for the KL Street couplet." As all of us know, the recommendation is against the KL Street couplet. This is pointed out after it was in the June 13 packet to David Loyah, and here it is again. If any of the commissioners want to view the straw poll that you had on April 11 about that recommendation that you made, the original motion was to have the couplet as an option. The video and a transcription of exactly what was said is on your portal page at arcata1.com. The original straw poll said, quote, "I would like to propose that we leave L and K couplet in as something that's on the table." That was changed. It was changed so much that Commissioner Simmons, who had seconded the proposal, after the proposal was changed, he retracted his vote. In the table in your packet of other considerations, this is composed of items that don't get along with the draft plan, we'll say, contains multiple errors. I've mentioned that I feel this contains about one-twentieth of what has been brought up to the commission. One example, it says, "Create a new zone type surrounding the Creamery District," which shown is coming from a public member. It came from the chair of the Planning Commission. So essentially, Community Development Director David Loyah has ignoring the former chair of the Planning Commission. It was also came from the Playhouse, a letter from the Playhouse that was signed by 23 people, including one of Humboldt County's premier architects. You'll see that David Loyah has added, under PC recommendations, this table in this packet. It shows the Planning Commission as concurred with staff on building height. I will remind the commissioners and anyone who's listening, any council members who are watching, there has never been a vote by the commission on building height. There is a discussion as an exercise, as an exercise only. Now, if you wanted to have a vote, go right ahead, but, but to say that this concurs with staff at this point is a, what I regard as a false statement. A few short things. 3D modeling, we haven't seen any of it for months. Now is the time when we need it, when analyzing how the form-based code. I sent you by email some images of the St. Vinnie's parcel, and I'll continue to send materials on form-based code. Thanks.
Thanks, Fred. Commenters online?
Yes, we do. Go ahead, Lisa.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm speaking tonight to remind you that there is an important, outstanding issue that pertains to the land use and growth management elements in relation to protection of Arcata bottom agricultural lands and the Western Green Belt. The removal of language in the land use element titled "Protection of Natural and Agricultural Lands," specifically stating their productive, open space, and natural resource values are important to the community and shall be preserved, and conversion to other non-combatable uses shall be prohibited. That's the end of that language. This language removal, coupled with the sphere of influence continuing to include prime agricultural land, leaves these important resources vulnerable to annexation and development. This would be contrary to efforts over the last 50-plus years to protect these lands. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Go ahead, Jane.
Good evening, Commissioners. Sorry I sent you my comments in writing so late. It was about four o'clock, 4:30. This packet exceeds, I'm Jane Woodward. This packet exceeds 600 pages, an enormous fog for you and the public. On the other hand, it includes almost all possible items you might address, and we haven't, don't have to search for them elsewhere, which I appreciate. In response, however, I think it would be useful for the commission to try to carve out in advance what you actually think you'll be able to tackle in this particular session or the next ones, so we, the public, know what to emphasize in our comments and which chunks to try to review in depth. I've attached my comments from the last commission meeting below since they remain to be addressed. In addition, the following. I read a recommendation in the packet that the Beryl District be broken into two sections, the portion in the coastal zone and the north, northern non-coastal zone portion. A similar recommendation was made months ago regarding the Gateway Hub or basically anything south of H Street. Please consider these suggestions as they would help address sea level rise and coastal zone issues. Two, staff appears to believe that the issue of L Street as a one-way street has been voted on as a final vote. That was not my impression, and you can hear others speak on that, such as Fred. And given the public response, I would appreciate if you would revisit it or hear directly from the Transportation Safety Committee. You clearly agreed upon the need to work on traffic calming on K Street right away. Is that work being planned soon? We need to have more discussion of the scope of the projects allocated to the zoning administrative versus Planning Commission to allow for public input to the extent feasible. All proposed projects should be required to be published in the local media so the public is on notice, sent to the public via the city's listserv of citizens wanting to be kept informed. We need to have more discussion of the economic viability and wisdom of building up to seven-story buildings in an area that is subject to sea level rise within 20 to 80 years, and what kind of construction we would recommend, be recommending due to sea level rise and geological earthquake issues. We should not be building in areas from which we know will need to retreat. And five, we, staff has never agreed to conduct a survey of Arcata residents to determine their interest in having high-rise buildings, and patently ignored the results of the January 2022 Town Hall where approximately 200 attendees overwhelmingly were against building over four stories. One has to conclude, staff doesn't want to know the answer because it would not comport with the draft Gateway plan. You have a lot of responsibility. We do feel rather frustrated in that we don't see the direct results of our public comment and public input in the decisions you're making, and we all wonder whether we're wasting our time.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
Let's hold the comment online.
Okay, I appreciate everyone's comments. We appreciate, we do appreciate your participation and input. I would, I would like to say that here in our meetings, we get a certain bandwidth of public opinion, but through our emails and interactions across the community, there are a lot of community members that have different opinions about, at the work we're doing, and I know it can feel frustrating sometimes, you feel like your comments are maybe not being followed, but I think the nature of the process is that some people's comments get followed, and it's just part of this whole democratic process. So I do appreciate everyone's input. We have two business items today. The first is to approve Planning Commission minutes for the special meeting, June 13, 2023. Do any Planning Commissioners have comments on the minutes, or is there a motion to adopt?
I move to approve Planning Commission minutes.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
All second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. The next agenda item this evening is to consider a recommendation to the City Council on the general plan updates, and as usual, can we please begin with the staff report?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I'll break this into a couple of different pieces because there's a little bit of work tonight, but as you recall from your last meeting, you decided to try and spend the most of the rest of your time here before your July 11 recommendation on the form-based code, so we're going to try and preserve time and energy for that. One of the tables that was in your staff report from last time, it's also in the staff report this time, Table 2, identified the various decision-making pathways that each element went through, and as you recall from your last meeting, we asked you all to fill out your respective decisions as to how you'd want to see those proceed, and staff would compile them for this meeting. Here's the, the table that was reproduced in Excel, it's the exact same that was in Table 2. I'm going to hide these cells that have the content that's in the staff report so that you can take a look more closely at the element and the, and the decisions. You'll see that for each element and each commissioner, we've compiled your votes here, so the first So the first exercise we'd like you to walk through is to confirm this is your voting on these issues, on these, I'm sorry, on these elements, and then for those, you know, some of these have pretty clear break in terms of, you know, the way that the vote is leaning at this point, in terms of whether to continue to review these elements before making a recommendation. For those that there's a more even split, you may want to have some conversation about that and, you know, provide a little bit of deliberations to see if you can strengthen the, you know, the vote one way or the other. The last column here is the summary, so this is based on the vote that you have going right now. The conclusion is that no, we are not going to review the land use element before making a recommendation to the city council on July eleventh. But you will see that there is some, you know, yeses and some nos for each of those various commissioners, and so, and unfortunately, Mayor was not able to participate in this exercise because she's out of country. But I did want to, just before I turn it over to the commission again, point out that there is one category, if the votes stay the way that they currently are, you know, the current conclusion stays the same, there's only one element, the introduction, for which the decision would shift, and just to show you what that looks like, if I put a yes for Mayor in all of these elements that she wants to have all of them reviewed, this is the only one that shifts over to yes based on the current configuration of votes. If there are any of these that you wish to have more discussions on, to see if you can switch a no to a yes or a yes to a no, that may change that outcome. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I think it's really up to your deliberations to talk about, you know, which of these you feel, you know, most strongly about those discussions, maybe the introduction being the one where there's a shift in vote, depending on the yeses is an important place to start.
Go ahead, Peter.
I'm clearly the outlier here. The reason I voted the way I did is, first of all, I'll say, I'm fairly new to the commission, so I, this is my six-month anniversary, and I, whereas I've read a number of these, not all of them, pretty carefully, and commented on them for our meetings, I have never had the opportunity to read them kind of as a whole, completely through, and reflect on them. And I'd like to do that, that's why I voted yes. I talked to David about this. I would like to have an additional month and be able to read clean copies of each of these elements with all the additions that we've made over the last six months, so that I can kind of get a feel for the wholeness of each of the elements, rather than focusing on the details. And I promised to do that by early August. I would feel much more comfortable saying we're done if I were able to do that. So that, I'm trying to explain my vote, which is clearly different than others.
Thanks for that, Peter. Does anyone else have comments?
Matt?
So before this exercise, we had been going through element by element, but as I was reviewing all of them, you know, I did notice a couple small things that I would change. And I wrote David, and I said, "Here's a few small things I would change," but they weren't, you know, big policy changes. And David said, "Oh, yeah, those are like just suggestions essentially from the public that we can just take under advisement." And so I'm almost thinking, you know, we don't need to reserve, if anyone wants to what Peter's saying, we don't have to reserve a whole meeting to like one element, right? We could reserve a meeting to any sort of big remaining things. We could make a list of things. But I voted no because I felt like it was in a pretty good place everywhere, so, yeah.
Thanks for that. Joel or Dan, anything to add to this right now?
Well, it's a lot. It was a, it's a large homework assignment, and it was very helpful to have the opportunity to go back through what the different committees had said specifically. I liked the color coding and then all, as well as going deeper in and seeing exactly what the committee said about different things. And for the most part, there was a lot of agreement about the general process of the gateway plan moving forward from most of the committees. There was, and I read in detail the parts where they didn't agree with the general momentum of the gateway plan. I wouldn't, I would, I, it was hard to read cut-up versions, like Peter said, with, you know, lots of notes or even sections you couldn't read because the note was right over the, you know, chunk of paragraph or something like that. And if we can have more time, it would be great to just ponder this deeper, you know, it's a big deal. I'm not quite sure why the timeframe is so set on July eleventh, and if it doesn't need to be, I would be happy to go a little longer. Otherwise, generally, I mean, I did feel like I thoroughly analyzed what all these different committees and participating entities said about this project, and I feel like there was almost complete agreement, and the few places where there really clearly wasn't, I know that we have had some thorough discussions about and did straw polls about and overrode them. So, you know, they are part of the record, but as far as our deliberations, they haven't moved the needle on where we stood on the issues up there. So I know I'm not asking for something distinct here, I'm just kind of sharing my thoughts on it.
Yeah, I think that's helpful. I appreciate everyone's comments and thoughts on the process. I, I think, for me, I'm thinking about a couple of things. One is the vote we took to prioritize the time that we have to work on the gateway code and preserve bandwidth for that. Two, we did go through these items, albeit under, prior to the framework, but they still were before us, and, you know, some of us anyways had a chance to review it, certainly the full commission did at that point. I would suggest that at the very least, we would go through Item 10, since that seems to be the place where the vote is the closest. Be happy to pull introduction for a conversation. Otherwise, my sense on this is by looking at everyone's votes and noting that we make decisions by majority, outside of introduction, I don't see a real reason to go through any of these other items, given the vote tallies. But does anyone have an objection to that pathway to working through this table and the vote tallies as they are?
I would vote yes, I have an objection. I'd like to take more time, but, you know, I'll go with the majority, obviously.
Can I make an observation?
Sure.
So, you know, I understand the, you know, the slight nuances between why folks voted the way that they voted, and I think what Dan just articulated was sort of this, I'm, you know, moderately comfortable moving forward, you know, sure if there was some more time, I would love to take it, you know, I'm hearing these kinds of things. Joel, you know, may have some comments to add, but one thing you could do is have a motion that was something, something along the lines of what Dan just said, where, you know, we, and kind of combining what Commissioner Simmons said, that, you know, we've reviewed these, we're generally in line with these, we want you to start working on this, this is basically the direction we're moving forward with, there may be some, you know, minor tweaks that we're going to want to recommend moving forward from here. We don't think we need to take each of these elements up, element by element, you know, going through the full rubric for each one, and we think we're ready to go on those. That gives you the time, I mean, the decision on the eleventh is not a final recommendation, we're not even having you adopt a resolution, you're just forwarding a recommendation, you know, preliminary recommendation to the city council so that they can start working on it. And if you'll recall, when they asked for a decision in July from the planning commission, that was at a time when we weren't making much progress on making decisions. I think we've had a complete 180 since that time, and the commission is making many decisions and making them, you know, very, you know, rapidly. So you could, you know, forward a recommendation that sort of, you know, constitutes your current thinking on, you know, on the elements, and, you know, take then the next couple of meetings, take the next month to, you know, vet out these additional details. We can talk about, you know, the items that Commissioner Simmons brought up or that any of you wish to bring up to just really hone in on, that'll give Commissioner Lehman the time to, you know, to review the documents in more detail for the holistic point of view. And then you'll be well-prepared when it does come time for the commission to adopt a resolution, making a formal recommendation to the city council that these are the final documents. I think part of the reason why they made that decision was because the city council wants to get involved. They want to start reviewing this document, they want to know that they've got documents that you all think are, you know, are close to snuff. And they even said at the time that, you know, if you needed an additional month, that wasn't an issue, it was just not, not making, I mean, this was the subtext, not making any progress was what the issue was. Now we've demonstrated we're making progress. So that would be my suggestion, is that, you know, if you want to let the vote stand as it is, to forward these on as a recommendation, that's kind of a light recommendation, we're generally headed in the right direction, and let them know, we also may have some additional comments, but this is basically where we're landing. I think that would be good.
I think that's great. Would this then be agendized at some date specific so that we have, whatever, two weeks, three weeks a month, to read a clean version and bring back, as Matt said, any little minor changes?
Yeah, absolutely. So what you would do moving forward from here is, you know, this is going to, this is going to be part of your recommendation on July eleventh. Part of the action will involve a statement about where you, as a commission, land on these elements as they're currently drafted. Excuse me. And then, you know, also acknowledging that there's some follow-up work that you want to do. Your formal recommendation on, you know, which is required by state law for you to provide a resolution to the city council, making a formal recommendation on all of the decisions that are going to be made on the general plan update, that'll come in spring of next year. So for all intents and purposes, you've got, you know, the rest of the year to consider this and, you know, decide if there are modifications that you want to make. To some of the public comment that was made about, you know, where, you know, this falls in line with, you know, decisions that you've actually made or comments that the public has made that haven't been incorporated, comments that committees have made that haven't been incorporated, you know, this still allows for time for you to make those decisions as well. And in fact, this was going to come later in the discussion, but one commenter referenced Attachment I that has the, you know, these are basically the other considerations table, these are things that weren't incorporated into the various elements, the majority of them come out of the gateway element. And what we've done here at the staff level, as we had mentioned in the staff report, is that based on conversations that you've had previously, we've inserted what we expect you're going to say as a commission, that you concur with staff on this issue, for example. And so these are in your packet as Item I. You will be able to, what the staff report asks you to do is to come back to this table and verify, do you, as a commission, agree that you concur with staff on this item? And for the items that don't have anything, where do you land? Because we only made this concur with staff sort of lead-in on areas where staff felt pretty confident based on discussions that you've had, the decisions that you've already made over the last several months. And I would recommend that you do this work similar to what we did with the Table Two, where you do your homework independently, you send this into staff, staff will compile it, and will go through the exact same exercise where you look at, you know, what the decisions, how they fall out, and that'll allow you to formalize, part of your recommendation is based on what has been proposed, i.e. the general plan elements, and then part of your recommendation is based on what has been proposed to not be included, this table here. There absolutely, I will acknowledge, there absolutely are things that folks have said that are not included in this table that they've recommended. We have not captured everything, that was not the intent to capture everything. The gateway plan, we tried to do our best to capture what, you know, public members wrote and what committees decided in their formal decisions, and then for the general plan elements, these were only the concepts that came out of the committee or commission discussions, and so wanted to be clear on that as well. But looking at those two documents, looking at both the general plan in its current state and then looking at the items that were not included yet in the drafts, you'll be able to move forward with a recommendation on, you know, what to include to the city council at this point, recognizing that the final decision isn't until next spring.
Joel, go ahead.
Yeah. First, I just wanted briefly to explain my vote on a couple of the elements, particularly the mobility and the gateway, which I got outvoted. I don't, at least on mobility, I wasn't a member of the commission at the time, and for both of those, those have seemed to spark the most controversy in public input, so I thought another look at those could be appropriate. But I'm outvoted, and that's fine, I accept that. I like the proposal of giving a preliminary recommendation and then perhaps setting some meeting, you know, after the eleventh and one or more meetings for those items that we think are important enough to discuss, and I'd also note, at those meetings, we would be back to our regular schedule, so if they're, depending on how they're agendized as items, the public could then, you know, have their input as those matters were going to be discussed. So I think that's important, that people know that we're listening to them, whether we agree or don't agree, they're being heard, and I just want to make sure that, that is important.
Thanks for those comments, yeah. I think, I mean, all along we've been operating that we'll, we'll get to the city council what we've got to by the eleventh, and we'll continue working on it, but they'll be able to begin working on it in tandem and take up that work on their end. So I think there is time, it sounds like, possibly revisiting this after the eleventh, and if we are going to do so, we would be doing so under the existing framework we have, so people could submit specific comments or policy changes, we can have a list of consent items, et cetera, et cetera. So it wouldn't necessarily have to be a single element agendized for a meeting, we could take the whole thing under consideration. Does that sound reasonable to everybody? Okay. So, sounds like there's agreement there, and that would allow us also to focus the time, as we said last meeting, on the gateway code, which we have, for the record, this is our last meeting under the special meeting status regarding public comment. So our next meeting, Judith will be back, and we will be back, we will be out of special meeting, we will still be starting at 5:30, but we will have public comment on every agenda item, as well as at the beginning. Okay, so are you tracking all that?
Absolutely, and I just wanted to confirm before we close on this, Chair, that I think you changed your vote on the introduction. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, if we're, if we're going to revisit it and if we're going to hand this table over as this is where our thinking is now, I'm open, but if we're going to hand it over as a table and revisit the bulk of it later, then we should just turn it over as is, or, you know, I mean, if commissioners would like to take more time to specific, to talk to Item 10, introduction now, and then revisit the rest of the table, I guess that feels a little bit clunky to me, but I'm open, depending on, no.
I want to get to the code.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I was thinking is, I changed my, I shifted my thinking in sofar as, having heard from the rest of the commissioners, it sounded like there was a clear desire to put this, to bring this back. to put this, to bring this back. But if we're gonna, if we're able to submit this table as part of our recommendation on the 11th and we know that we're going to have this back and we'll be able to put it through the framework, then I'm comfortable leaving that discussion about the introduction as well as the other elements for that time so that we can focus on the Gateway Code now.
Scott, when do you imagine we're gonna, what kind of schedule are we going to use to look at these again?
Well, how, I mean, we could bring this up after the, after the 11th. Well, we still have some, I suppose it depends on how many, you know, how much bike rack progress we get to in part, but as David said, it's, it's till next spring before we're going to finalize this. So we've got plenty of time to give everyone a chance to dig through it, prepare comments and put it on the agenda. Do you have any scheduling thoughts about that, David?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll just put it on the agenda for each meeting until you're done. And I think approaching it with the, you know, with the discussion guide approach where Commissioners, if they have specific changes they want to propose, they send those in before we get the packets out and we can, you know, get them in the packets like we've done this time and that's, that's a good way to do it.
Yeah, I, I feel much more comfortable with that in mind.
Great. Good. I'm glad. Sounds like there's consensus there. Everyone feels good about that. So having said that, can we then, do we need another staff report or we're just going to transition into taking a look at proposed Gateway Code changes?
Yeah, the only thing I'll say in prep for this, which I do have the discussion guide up here, and we'll, we'll talk a little bit about why they're big, bold red text for a second, but I did want to mention that, you know, there, we've, we've been getting a lot of comments. You got a, an email from CRTP with several comments about specific changes to the code. Over the last couple of weeks, we received some specific comments on changes to the code from other public members and we're also getting them from the Commissioners. And so what I'd like to suggest to, you know, kind of ensure that the Commission is seeing the recommendations that the public members are, are making is that public members who send us specific recommendations on changes to the Gateway Code before the start of business on Monday, the 3rd of July, so, you know, send them Sunday night so that they're there in our inbox Monday, the 3rd. We will get those into the packet. Now, we've, we've changed our protocol over the course of this review and we've been putting all of those comments into, onto the website and directing Commissioners to, you know, to review those on the website. Most people are CCing you, they're, you know, they're emailing you directly, but there are a few that are coming in that, you know, are coming to staff and we're putting those on the website and we're asking you to take a look at those. So we'll go back through the last several weeks since the code was released and call those out of the communications we've received. And then if anybody sends in new communications on specific recommendations for change, we can put those into the packet and you'll be able to explicitly vote on those changes. If there are any that you want to pull forward and say, hey, let's talk about this one when you're looking at them in your packet for the next meeting, you'll be able to do that. At this meeting, we compiled the suggestions that came in from Commissioners and the, the second and third ones here were Commissioner Yodowitz's. I spoke with him about these in the intervening time and read the, or basically gave the, the same information that is written into the, the compilation here and he asked to retract these as recommendations, given the recommendations. So if everyone's okay, I'm going to block out the first, second and third as not moving forward. Does anyone have an objection to that?
No.
Okay. Okay. So then I didn't have time to compile these into consent items, so we'll just go through these. If there's no staff comment, generally that means, you know, we don't have a strong position on it one way or the other. This first one, appeals should be limited to residents. I spoke with our city attorney and I think this is legally problematic. There may be other people who have standing, but the comment that came after I wrote this is that the city attorney did say that we could think through ways to make sure that the standing is, is, you know, is limited. So, you know, someone on the other side of the planet can't just, you know, file an appeal for, for no reason, not that that's ever happened, but... So staff is recommending you don't adopt, number one, changing any person to Arcata residents, but would put forward the idea that it's, it's fertile ground for a discussion about who should have standing in these appeals.
That was my comment, to change it to any Arcata resident and, because I just thought it was, you, you could have Mr. Mizblow from Timbuktu, you know, who has no connection to Arcata, file an appeal. I think any, my language of any resident is, is a little bit limiting because there could be, you know, a project sponsor who's not local here, a property owner living somewhere else or who has property here who's building a project. But I, I think you have to have a stake, you know, in, 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 in the, the project to, one way or the other, to, to file an appeal and not just... And, and I think somewhere else, maybe in the existing code of design review appeals, I think the language is, I kind of remember seeing any aggrieved person or something like that, but I'd just like to narrow the possible pool of appeal lines down.
Joel, you're an attorney and I'm not. Could you say something like, any personal, any person with reasonable standing may file an appeal? I mean, does that have any weight?
I would, I would suggest that, you know, we have this conversation at a later time and staff can do additional research and maybe come up with some suggestions so we're not just casting about and trying to craft language on the fly.
Yeah, staff in conjunction with city attorney.
Yeah, could the attorney suggest language?
Yeah, so I think we had purple as our, oops, code for staff to do some research and propose something. So can I turn this purple?
Should we just take a stop poll, though, that we're all okay with limiting language?
Yes, thank you.
And then that way it doesn't actually have to come back to us?
Absolutely.
Okay, number four is on consent. There was a, an error that was caught, so I'm going to turn that green. If everyone's okay with that. Okay, landscaping. Joel, I think this was yours, maybe?
Right. I, I was just suggesting a limit, limitation of the type of landscaping to native plants.
Strictly native, only native?
Yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, well, I'm, I'm open, but primarily, I'm not, you know, I don't know much about horticulture, but I don't know that we want to introduce things that might be harmful to the local environment.
We do have provisions that prevent invasive species from landscaping. We've, we've tried to push the boundaries on requiring native landscaping in the past and, you know, there's just, it's, it's a hard line to toe. And many people, I would say most people's aesthetic around native plants, you know, is, you know, does, those two things don't, the Venn diagram doesn't overlap very much.
I agree. Primarily native plants?
Or encouraging natives.
Encourage, that, that's even better.
You okay with that friendly modification?
Yes.
Are we all in agreement on that?
Everyone good with that? Yep.
Okay, inclusionary zoning, I can't remember whose this was.
That was mine again. Maybe it's there and I didn't see it, but I wanted to throw out there, you know, giving project sponsors an opportunity of having an in-lu fee that could be set, you know, at a, at a level that could go into a pool to build new housing units if for some reason or another they don't want to include them onsite. And then obviously the city could, whatever, would need to adopt language as to how those fees were used and to make sure the in-lu, that housing was built in the Gateway area. But I, I just wanted to throw that out there for discussion.
Any other Commissioners have comments or concerns about that? Matt?
Yeah, so I actually had a similar thought and I did some reading on it and the, the concern that I found with in-lu fees is that one of the benefits of inclusionary zoning is you get sort of that mixed income housing, right? And so if all the developers are building market rate and paying an in-lu fee, you have the same problem that we were sort of trying to avoid with the inclusionary zoning. I'm not saying it's a terrible idea. I still think it could generate a lot of affordable housing. I just wanted to flag that issue.
Yeah, I think, I didn't have a chance to write this in, but I, I would have the same comment from the staff position. I think the, the intent of the policy is to ensure that there's a mix of affordability ranges in these developments. So I would support that. And then to the second point about hitting 10% to 20% for inclusionary housing, I, I did address that in the, in the staff report and I pointed out, you know, a couple of resources, so I'll be a little bit brief on this, but there's an overlap between, when, when there's an overlap between inclusionary zoning and the density bonus law, density bonus would trigger incentives and concessions that would in part defeat the purpose of our community benefits program. I'm not suggesting that we don't do that, but I'm just trying to make sure that we do this wide-eyed if we do. If the Commission wants to recommend a higher threshold for inclusionary zoning, just note that all developers who develop and are triggered inclusionary zoning will also take advantage of the density bonus law and will then tell us, I am not providing you community benefit A, B, C, D, and E. They get five concessions and incentives and they'll be reducing their project costs by eliminating those community benefits. It's definitely a policy trade-off. It's one of many that we're going to have to consider. When we had inclusionary zoning in our, our books before, I believe it was 15% as a baseline. I'd have to double-check that, but if, if memory serves, it was 15%. So that's, that's certainly something you should discuss. Another comment that came up was, and I can't remember if this was in our last meeting, but another way to try and address this so that you're, you know, not overlapping with the density bonus law, but getting as much affordable housing as you possibly can is to ramp up the numbers. So right now I think we have 5% and 3%. You can actually go up to 9% and 4% and, and still not have an overlap with density bonus. You may have developers who say, well, I'm so close to density bonus, I'm just going to add the percent and, you know, take those, those incentives if we do that, but, you know, I think that's, you know, a, you know, fair risk to take, you know, to try and get more affordable housing. So certainly, Commission should weigh in on that.
Are there recent projects that have taken advantage of the density bonus laws?
We haven't had a density bonus project in a fair amount of time. The density bonus used to be a lot weaker than it is currently and so I would not be surprised to see projects taking advantage of them moving forward. The, you know, the, the affordability restrictions are pretty minimal and the impact on total density is, is considerable. And then when you take into consideration that the developers can basically pick and choose which standards and, and fees they're going to adhere to, it's, it's a pretty strong incentive now. So I, I think it will change in the future. I think we've done like maybe two density bonus projects in the time that I've been working here.
And you think the likelihood of the density bonus being utilized renders the, the in-lu fees less relevant?
Um, not, not necessarily, but I, I would not recommend or I wouldn't give a full-throated recommendation for in-lu fee options just because I think it runs counter to the concept of trying to have mixed income, not only mixed income neighborhoods or a mixed income community, but mixed income buildings and that, you know, lower income folks are getting the same, you know, benefits from, you know, the architecture and design and, you know, and whatever else that's coming with those market rate units.
I don't have experience with this. If these options are available, do people use them a lot? I mean, are we opening a big door here?
The options of in-lu fee?
Yeah.
They're, yeah, I think that, that you will see people who are coming in and their idea is to build, you know, a, a luxury condo project and they don't want to have any low-income units in that project and so they would pay the in-lu fee. And I think that, you know, you know, another way of looking at this is not only does it run counter to the, the policy, but it runs counter to the efforts that we're attempting to prevent gentrification through these specific policy recommendations that incorporate affordable housing into these projects. So it's, it's not just like we're, we're conflicting with our policy. That's, that's not a problem. We just change our policy. But it's, it's also having the negative effect on the community that we designed the policy around trying to counteract.
What happens to the in-lu fee itself and to what extent could the community, is there a sense that it would feed back into the Gateway project in a positive way or does it just dissolve into the general fund?
No, we would definitely have it as a set aside. You know, it would, you know, it would likely fall under my department to, to manage those fees. We'd set up a trust account. We would use those to, you know, create affordable housing units in other projects, you know, so it's, it's, it's a well, you know, tried and true means of, you know, ensuring that, you know, even if you don't get the benefit on a project-by-project basis, the community still gets that benefit. Yeah.
And, go ahead, Joel.
Yeah, no, I, I was, I was going to say that, there was a comment earlier that the in-lu fee may eliminate affordability or promote gentrification. You can, can do, once a city gets control of the in-lu fee, they can build what they want to build. They could build, you know, on city, then, once they have the property, they can build affordable units if they want to, if the city wants to, and they can build them in the Gateway. So I, it is, yes, maybe it's a concern, but it's not, to me, that's not a huge concern. I haven't run, I'm not qualified to run numbers to know whether it's more enticing for development, developer to do an in-lu fee rather than onsite building, onsite units, but I, I would, I just put it out there because I know other jurisdictions do it and have been doing it for years and it's not an uncommon thing and I just didn't see it here. So I thought, that's why I wanted to raise it. I'm not, not necessarily a proponent of it, but I think it's something that, that is, could be meritorious.
Who sets the fee? How, how is that set?
Yeah, the city would have to develop a rubric for, you know, identifying the, you know, the cost per unit and, you know, we can certainly do that. One, one thing that the Commission could consider recommending is allowing for some proportion of the, you know, the units to be in-lu instead of in-place. So that's, that's something you could consider as well. So like no more than 25% can be in-lu or something like that.
It feels like we could go around and around on this for a while.
Yeah, maybe gradients of agreement. See where people land on this. Yeah, I'm a solid three on, on this.
Four.
Peter?
It was my proposal, so...
Hopefully stronger than three.
Yeah, I was, four and a half.
Yeah, four and a half means...
Four is a low one.
Yeah, four means you're opposed to it.
Okay.
So we, so... So we, so, okay, so as written? Or limitation to certain proportion?
Yeah. I believe so.
It sounds like we just rejected.
Rejecting this.
Yeah, we were two threes, two fours, and a one or a two, something? Yeah, I think that's.
One and a half.
Okay. And there were two parts of this. What do we do to maximize the percentage? Do you want to move on to this piece, or do you want to move on to the next one?
I, I said in another proposal down below that we should raise it from where it was originally, but that we should not raise it above the density bonus. And so I think you had thrown out a few numbers a few minutes ago, which I don't remember off the top of my head, but raising it some, you know, because the original proposal was definitely lower than the density bonus, you know, trigger zone I would be more than happy with.
Well, do we want to maybe consider that more detailed proposal and think that that may render the section, second portion of this question moot?
I, I will say mine is not that much more detailed. It just said it could be higher.
Can somebody remind me the range that we're talking here?
I'm pretty sure David said seven and nine. Right now, we're at three and five.
The other thing about, so the, the original draft had low income.
You said it was on seven.
But there's also, you know, very low income. So there's, there's a few more levels of affordable housing, and so we could, we could get more granular. My suggestion would be that we raise them all to be sort of just below the density bonus. But, yeah.
And as staff pointed out, if we get too close to density bonus, they might just say, "Oh, it's cheaper to just go density bonus and not have to do all these community benefits."
That is true. But we would get a lot of affordable housing, which is a big concern.
Yeah, I think we also are obligated to our community. The community benefits program is a big part of the Gateway, and to me, it feels very important to protect it.
Yeah, I, I agree with Dan. We, we don't want to obviate it.
And so what does that mean, Dan? That you, you're concerned about raising the, the range too close to the density bonus?
Yeah, and I don't know.
Likewise.
That's why I just asked, what, what range are we talking here? We need to talk numbers.
And, go ahead.
I, this is burning. So one of the things we did with the benefits was we are going to have the, the city council make it a resolution so that they can amend it easier in the future. And I actually think that these numbers probably should be like that, too, because it's sort of a dial that you might want to turn depending on market conditions. And so, so another suggestion I have is that we sort of make this a more flexible piece of this, right? Because we don't want to set it in stone today and have it 10 years from now not make any sense. Yeah.
I, I can, I can look into that. I think that the, whereas the community benefits program is a voluntary program, this is, this is a zoning ordinance that is mandatory, and so that may need to be codified in an ordinance, so I can look into that. The other thing I wanted to point out is that in the community benefits program, there's actually one of the, one of the options, one of the benefit options, is if you give 10% more affordable housing than what's required by the inclusionary zoning requirement, you get a certain number of points. And so what that would mean, even using the existing numbers, the low existing numbers, is if someone came in with that 10%, they would be into the density bonus range, and they'd be able to say, "Okay, well, here are the, you know, 10 community benefits that I'm proposing for my project, and these are the five I'm not going to do because I'm getting a density bonus." So chances are good that you wouldn't completely obviate or eliminate the opportunity for community benefits, but you would certainly reduce the impact of them. So that's, that's really the policy recommendation. Do we, you know, give a, a break for projects that are going to propose higher levels of affordability in terms of, you know, these added costs associated with our community benefits or not? Recognizing that there's a, you know, a lot of tipping points involved. If inclusionary zoning is required once you get above 30 units, and the developer understands that by, you know, taking advantage of the affordable, you know, options within the, the community benefits program, and then also is able to take advantage of the density bonus provisions, you know, it's, it's sort of inherently already built in to, to kind of water down the, the community benefits program. And there's, I guess the, you know, while we've sort of led into that, because we do want to support affordable housing, I think that we have to acknowledge that the, you know, one of the driving forces here is to create affordable housing for working-class people. And you can do that, you know, through these affordability covenants. So I would suggest whether you make it mandatory as an inclusionary zoning program would be, or whether you make it optional and incentivize it as you could through the community benefits program and the density bonus program, you know, we're, ultimately, we're, we're achieving that goal.
I mean, it's, it, it's simple in some ways. We're weighing our commitment to community benefits versus our commitment to affordable housing. Those are the two, those are on opposite sides of the scale. Because the more community benefits there are in a project, the less affordable the project is.
Yeah, and some of this may be sort of an academic exercise, because the reality is that most projects that are providing affordable housing are also, you know, having to be subsidized. Most of those subsidy programs come with, you know, requirements for, you know, you know, other kinds of, you know, onsite improvements. So, you know, I don't want this to be sort of categorical, but I guess, you know, just looking into, you know, how we ultimately arrive at a future with affordable housing, you know, we have a good track record. You know, the city itself, the city has been involved in, you know, well over 400 units of affordable housing over the last 20 years, you know, supporting those through grant-funded programs, loans that we make directly to, to builders. I have no reason to believe that that wouldn't continue into the future, and that we'll continue to get affordable housing for, you know, folks earning 80% area median income or less, you know, through those sources. And so even if it's not codified, I think we're still going to get there. But, you know, I would encourage us to codify it as well, to, you know, stand by the, the principles that we have in our, our policies.
Well, there's a difference between inclusionary zoning and sort of grant-funded, deed-restricted affordable developments, right? Like, inclusionary zoning, we're putting that burden on private developers, and then the others are kind of being developed through a different pathway.
Yes and no. I mean, there's, in fact, one of the main reasons we took inclusionary zoning out of our zoning ordinance was because we couldn't fund it anymore. So almost every inclusionary zoning unit that got built prior to 2014 was built with redevelopment agency assistance, and we had very low threshold at that point for, you know, trigger. It was like at five units. I believe if you built more than four units, you had to do inclusionary zoning. And so, you know, just the program wasn't working, and without that financial backing, you know, it, projects just weren't working. So I would, I would say that yes, if inclusionary zoning triggered, it's definitely a requirement that they provide it. But I would also say that where inclusionary zoning is triggered, and in particular where people were wanting to do more affordable housing, the city would be very interested in participating and trying to find ways to, to partner financially.
Yeah, I, I was just going to say that I don't think any builder will build inclusionary housing unless they're required to, or they get some benefit by doing that.
Well, I'm not seeing a clear decision one way or the other on this.
The solid proposal on the table right now, and then we can go back if this doesn't address the 15% to 20% comment, is to either do 10% to 20% as was recommended by both Commissioner Simmons and Commissioner Yodowitz, or to take the lower thresholds of 4% and 9% that don't automatically trigger density bonus.
I'm closer to the 4% to 9%.
Can I just point out, too, that the, the proposal, I think that Matt, you've got up there for 4%, changes it to very low, wherein what we have right now is low. So it would lump low and moderate to 9%, and then the 4% was very low. So I just wanted to point that out, too.
Does that have the effect of changing the net numbers?
Um, no, no, it doesn't. And what I would say, too, is a further clarification, the moderate income units, we would want to mirror what they have in density bonus law, and basically, moderate income units qualify if they're for sale units. So it's not just moderate income rental units.
Got it. Okay, Dan, vote for closer to the 4% to 9% version of this. Peter, is that where you're landing, based on some of the comments you made earlier?
I guess, yes, I think so.
Okay. And Matt and Joel? Or Matt or Joel?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with 4% to 9%. Four and nine. I would go with the higher ones.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm going to vote with the 4% to 9% group, so I think we'll, that will, that language will pass.
Joel, I think these may have been yours. One thing I would say in terms of these, I, we are attempting to get our architect that we're working with to the, your next meeting, and so if these pass, what I'd like to say is to, I'd like to get their feedback and, and have you hear from them before you, you know, formalize that. Because there may be some, some really good reasons why sodder articulation, for example, is, is at its current. Maybe it gets too busy if you put four or more.
That's fine. The one D and G2A there, I just wanted to throw out there, because I'm not an architect, I just wasn't sure of the, the reasons that the, the proposal in the code currently reflects the, the spacing that it does. The third one on the glass, the reflectivity of, of glass is, maybe that's just, that's a personal aesthetic of mine, but I really don't like mirrored glass. And right now, I think it's just prohibited on the ground floor. So just throwing out there, prohibiting it, you know, at, at any level of a building.
Questions or concerns?
What's the purpose of mirrored glass? Is it one-way or something?
Privacy, I presume?
Yeah, I guess, and just a design aesthetic.
Well, again, that could be part of the architect discussion. It's, these are all good points, but I'd love to hear back from somebody.
That's fine. We don't have to vote on it now.
And there, there might be like, I don't know, bird-strike considerations or something else with certain kinds of glass that would be relevant and, and good to hear about? So let's wait to hear from the architect on this item. Purple.
I believe this is yours as well, Joel. Commissioner Yodowitz?
I'm not, well, I, I don't think I was the sole person on this. I think I was inspired by Matt, so he had his comments in at our last meeting on this one. I, I think we want to discourage particularly gas-operated vehicles as much as we can. And I think limiting a parking minimum would be one way to do that.
Strong second in support for this policy.
A strong third.
I'll join with that voice.
It's, it's green.
I think, let's see, the next one was just a question, but I wanted to put this on here because there's a reference to Table 7 that's in the Gateway Plan in the code, and so just wanted to point that out. We can, we can make that connection more direct by pulling the table in to the, to the code.
So we're looking at 10 community benefits now?
Yeah.
I think this is mine again. If there's, okay, there's no maximum. This is the first time I've seen staffs comment, so that's fine. The last one is just a proposal to add a, a provision that allows a planning commission to revisit the form-based code after there's a little bit of experience to see how it actually works in operation. It's, it doesn't require anything other than a review. The dates, I, you know, kind of guesstimated dates in there. I'm happy if, if anybody wants to change the, those to some other time period.
If, if this is really unnecessary, why put it in, and why have dates at all?
I mean, I don't want to speak for Commissioner Yodowitz, but I think, you know, it's fine to put that in as an accountability measure. You know, the reason why I say it's unnecessary is because I believe that, you know, the commission and the council will be tracking the process, you know, making tweaks as necessary, you know, if unintended consequences are coming up. But it's fine to have an accountability measure and say, "Look, every two years, we're going to revisit this and just have a conversation. Do we feel like we're on track or not?"
Well, my point is, it puts a constraint on us, right? Because we have to wait two years. I mean, maybe we want to.
I don't think it says we have to wait, but it says within two years, we have to review. But if we want to review earlier, we can't. It just means that at least every two years, we would have to. I would support that as an accountability measure.
I would support it as well.
Yeah, that's a, that's a green.
Uh, this one's mine. The current draft says that a ministerial permit could be continued three times, so that would be four meetings on a permit that is supposed to be just checking boxes. And I think it should only be allowed to be continued once. And if it's really that far off of the checked boxes, they should be going for a discretionary permit.
Any questions or concerns by other commissioners?
Is there a staff response to that?
No, I mean, I think that's a, you know, reasonable approach as well. I think the three times came from mirroring some, some legislation that's recently been passed about, you know, ministerial reviews for, you know, for other projects that, I don't know if it's since SB 35, but it's in one of the recent streamlining laws that, you know, you can continue up to a total of four, three times with four meetings if you want to make it one. I don't see a problem with that.
Everyone's in favor of that?
Yep. Green it is.
Uh, this next one's mine as well. I propose we reduce street-facing setback minimums by at least 10 feet. So currently, we have a pedestrian realm requirement that goes onto private property, followed by an additional setback requirement, and I just feel like it's a overly excessive burden on developers. We're trying We're trying to get our housing built, and we, we don't want developers to avoid our city. And so that is why I'm proposing we reduce those numbers. We also heard from David at our last meeting that there was some concern about anything being built with the current requirements.
Is this reflect the CTRP suggestion as well?
Yes.
Yeah, and just to be clear, that would be private space but accessible only by the ground floor of the building?
Yeah, there's two types of setbacks that the buildings would have, depending on whether they are, you know, on an active frontage or whether they're, you know, more of like a, you know, residential feeling. And these are under Section nine-two-nine oh-seven-oh. And so there's a, this, the pedestrian realm is part, it's an expanded sidewalk. So we have, typically, we have five feet of city right-of-way that's available for a sidewalk. The pedestrian realm then builds out a larger sidewalk area so that we can have more street furniture and those sorts of things. And then on the back of that, there's, depending on the, the frontage type, there's a, an additional setback for sort of private space, and it's, it's larger or smaller depending on the type of project that, type of frontage it is. And so I, we did hear, as Commissioner Simmons said, we did hear from our architect that's working with our code writer now, after doing some, some ground-truthing on the code, they're actually working on like building out sites, and we're hoping to share those with you on the twenty-seventh, but they, they came back and said, you know, these, these setbacks are too large. They're gonna be hard for projects to pencil with, with the size of your city blocks and the size of these projects, that they're just too big.
And?
That's what your architect said?
Mm-hmm. And just, just to be clear, these are private spaces, but?
There's, there's both a private and a public element. So the question is, you know, do we want the, you know, currently, right now, there's on, for active frontages, there's a five-foot requirement for the frontage zone, and for any other location that's not termed active, it would be five for active, I'm sorry, for locations shown in ten. For all other locations, active frontages would either be five or fifteen, depending on whether they were, the setback would be five or fifteen, depending on whether they were active or not active. And then the landscape amenity zone is five feet inside of that. So you'd have, you know, basically somewhere between twenty and twenty-eight feet setback from the property line encroaching into the, the buildable area to provide for these, you know, other amenities, whether they're private space or whether they're, you know, additional public space.
And if I can just clarify my comments, the public space stuff is great. I love a wide sidewalk and room for a bike lane and all that kind of stuff. It's the additional private, you know, landscaping requirements that I think are excessive, especially when you consider that we already are requiring those public setbacks.
Especially as the only people in the building that will be able to access those will be the people on, on the ground floor. And so people on the additional floors get no benefit from that. I, I agree. I think that feels excessive. I would, I would join. I would support this proposal.
It, it does seem as though people on other floors, depending on how the project was designed, it could be a shared yard area or bocce ball court or something, but what we're saying, private, meaning behind a fence or not accessible to this enhanced sidewalk area, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Some of these would be more just like room for, you know, a stoop, basically, that, you know, encroaches down onto the sidewalk, so that, you know, some of them are smaller than others, but, and this would, you know, this would reduce the, you know, the setback that, you know, in, in this, it's not specifically designed for solar access to other parcels. But by making that change, just want to, you know, elevate and acknowledge that you would be reducing the setback that, under the current zoning, the way it's drafted, provides a, a larger solar access to, you know, to off-site adjacent parcels. With a ten-foot setback, and what our architect was saying was somewhere between a ten and twelve is what he thought would work. He also acknowledged he's not an economist, but they have an economist that we're going to, you know, also work with if we can get the contracting worked out, and they'll be able to provide us a little bit more definitive, you know, practicable, you know, how practicable these, these changes are, but, but he was suggesting that, you know, he felt like buildings would be a lot, would pencil a lot easier with a, you know, ten to twelve foot as opposed to this, these larger setbacks.
All right. Oh, go ahead, Dan.
To, to, I guess, further complicate this conversation based on the solar issue, it brings up the topic of stepbacks on higher floors, and I don't, I don't know when we want to touch on that again, but, you know, that fits right into what's the overall angle of the building in terms of solar shading. And if the setback down at the ground level is closer, then maybe this setback on these upper stories has to be more enhanced. I know that's another fiscal reality that we have to deal with.
Matt?
All, all I was gonna say is, this is sort of like the parking minimums, where a developer could still choose to place one of these landscaping setbacks, right? And, you know, instead of requiring it to be ten feet, they might choose to make it like two feet with some landscaping just for privacy. But I just feel like when we say from the outset that it was, you know, twenty to twenty-eight feet of space that they can't develop anything on, we're, we're severely limiting what can be built.
I agree. Peter?
I was gonna say about solar access, if the stepbacks are not until the fourth floor, for example, if the building is closer to the street, it's gonna make the street darker. That's a fact.
Just for a point of reference, the, the setback from the property line for the sorrel place is ten feet. And so that, that pushback, you know, from the property line reflects sort of a similar situation to what you would see on the shading to the, to the north. And, you know, in, in reality, the shading through, you know, the majority of the year is that it doesn't, the shadow doesn't reach across the street, and that, you know, until it's, you know, too dark for it to, to matter. And that during the winter times, there is shading on that, the adjacent building. The adjacent building is about thirty-five feet to the north there, and it does shadow, you know, cast a shadow that, you know, travels across the building, starting on the lower edge, and, you know, moves up until later in the afternoon, it does hit the roof on the far southeast side. So just for a point of reference, if you're familiar with that site and you, you understand how the shadow casting works on that building, it's approximately the same for a four-story building. And to Commissioner Taggney's point, if you go above four stories, then you would be then casting, you know, more shadow.
Well, I don't, I think we should try and just address this. I don't see how we can address this and simultaneously address the issue of setbacks other than acknowledging that they're connected.
I agree.
I, I think it, I think this may, to my mind, agreeing or not agreeing with this, if we agree with this, what it does is it, it changes the boundaries of the discussion around setbacks and how those should be. But I don't think we should try to combine those in making a decision now. Joel?
Yeah, I, I think, let me just ask David, would it be possible to draft a code provision that provides degrees of shade, like a degree of shade analysis and prohibit, have an objective standard that says if you shade an adjoining property this many hours, it's prohibited, but if it's less than that, it's okay? I mean, to what, what, you know, how, how fine are the, those kind of shading analyses available?
Yeah, you, you absolutely could, or you could, you know, you know, ask for, you know, more detail in terms of, you know, what the maximum footprints, you know, the maximum building height and footprint. Once you get the standards, you know, evaluated, you could take a look at that and see, is that acceptable? Or do we need to reduce the size of the buildings? You know, and I would suggest that, you know, at that point, you take into consideration, you know, all kinds of other factors, like economic factors for, you know, how, you know, realistic a building is, you know, given those standards and so on and so forth, so that you have a full understanding of, you know, the impact of those, those decisions. I think the, the challenge you run into trying to develop an objective standard around the building itself and saying that each project has to demonstrate this, is that you're going to, you're gonna have the, you know, the problem of, of the first in, basically. The first building in will then impinge on the ability of the next building to, you know, to, you know, to be able to fully use the code, you know, if it's adjacent. I, I think it gets really complicated on a site-by-site basis doing that. I think it, it makes more sense to say, you know, either comprehensively, we've looked at every site, we've, you know, done this comprehensive shadow analysis, and we're comfortable with the amount of shading that's gonna happen on adjacent buildings, or, you know, to do a sampling and say, you know, well, we've, you know, we've, we've understood that, you know, yes, buildings are gonna be shaded. We don't know the impact to all buildings, but, you know, we're comfortable with the ones we studied. You know, if that's, if that's of interest, or to, you know, say that, look, we think that the policies that we're, we're implementing, you know, are balancing the, you know, these two objectives, and we're not gonna ask for more study. If you ask for more study, that's, that's an appropriation the council will have to make. And then the last thing I'll say on this is that we did, you know, there is a video that I put together using some of the 3D GIS that we add accessible to us. You know, it wasn't based on, you know, these standards, but it was based on sort of maximum building, you know, glass box for, you know, using some sets of assumptions. And so that, that might be of interest for commissioners to, to take a look at. It's on our YouTube channel to refresh your memory on how we got to the, the standards that we're proposing here.
Thanks, David. I do feel like we, we've lost the thread a little bit of the item that's before us, which is really about the amount of setback at the ground level. Again, I think the issue of stepbacks and solar shading is a, is a matter for a different discussion, although I think it's important. So can we, can I, I'd love to get a sense of where the, where everyone is standing on, on this regarding reducing the setbacks by at least ten feet to get closer to our goal of building the kind of housing that we're trying to do here.
I totally support the idea.
Great. Dan is in favor. I know Matt is. Joel?
I'm in favor.
Peter? Okay, so that, that is adopted.
This is me as well. It's related. So the Gateway Neighborhood District not only has setbacks on the street, but also has setbacks on the rear and interior lines of the property, and I don't feel that those are necessary personally. I think they, they sort of are, I, I think their intent is to create that buffer between the gateway and the surrounding currently exclusionary single-family neighborhoods, but I don't think we need to do that. And so that's why I made this proposal.
And this would be specifically across K Street?
The neighborhood follows, is kind of north of the hub, and there, it's kind of on the edges of each of the higher-density zoning districts. I can pull up a map.
I think a map would be useful.
So the neighborhood are the brown areas here. So you can see they, they form sort of the boundary between the existing neighborhoods and the higher-density core hub, and there's nothing bounding that. This is Eleventh Street.
And what is, what is the staff recommendation on this proposal, or was there one?
You know, I think that we saw the neighborhood as a, you know, transition, and this was a way to try and, you know, create a little bit more buffer. The, the current standards do provide for a very dense urban feel. So, you know, I, I do think if we reduce those setbacks, you know, that, you know, certainly something that, you know, could be done. We'd have to start taking a look at the differences in the design standards at some point, whether or not these, you know, these districts are dissimilar enough to remain separate districts, and then it may require some, some modification of the policy language, because that's, that's part of the reason, the policy language around the transitional zone is part of the reason why we gave, gave larger buffers, smaller buildings. But, you know, certainly something the, the commission, you know, it's up to your purview to make that recommendation.
Other commissioners have input or questions about changing that component of the setback standards?
Well, I understand the sentiment that Matt's coming from there. I, though, I'm concerned about softening the blow to some of the existing neighborhoods, so if this setback was one of those, I, I think I'd be in favor of leaving it.
Peter?
I'd be in favor of leaving it as well. I, I don't think the, the gain that we get is worth having the crowded nature of having no setbacks.
Joel?
Yeah, I'm leaning, leaning toward not agreeing with the proposal. There are five feet interior and ten foot from the rear property line. And I think that, that seems appropriate.
I agree. I'm concerned, and I, I appreciate the language on softening that transition, so that's a no on that.
Okay, and then I think the commissioner already acted on this one earlier about removing parking, so I'm gonna turn the screen.
Correct.
The next one is also mine. We've got a couple of comments from the public about changing the minimum building height to three stories rather than two. I'm actually very curious to hear staff's thoughts on this, but, you know, if we're building new two-story buildings now, we're sort of not doing the intent of the gateway.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, there's, you know, a couple of things that don't line up real clearly in that table, and it's, it's hard to get, you know, clear separation between those jumps in, in thresholds. And, you know, the example I would use is that for each tier, the minimum building height is, you know, currently proposed two. I'm not sure why someone would choose to be in tier three and provide more community benefits and build a two-story building when they could be in tier one. So, you know, one of the things that I, you know, considered with our consultant was making it so that the minimum floors also goes up each, each step. I'm not sure if that fully resolves or maybe creates a new problem, but, you know, I certainly think that, you know, three stories. But, you know, I certainly think that, you know, three stories is, you know, reasonable minimum. I think that, you know, considering the, you know, financial feasibility of building larger scale buildings in our community in particular right now, we're likely to see, you know, only four-story buildings in the near term anyway. And I think that, you know, probably by the time, I think there are ways to build three-story buildings that are, you know, actually less expensive than, than four stories. There's ways to get away with doing no elevator, which, you know, significantly increases the cost of the building. So, you know, there's my, my waffly response to, do we have a, a recommendation? I guess the answer is sort of no, but those are things you should consider.
Dan?
I've always been surprised that it wasn't at least three. However, if somebody really wants to build two, they just wouldn't get a ministerial permit and they would go through design review and all this other stuff, right? I mean, they could apply.
Yeah, yeah. And I will, I will think a little bit more about this between now and our next meeting. I mean, the only thing that's coming up for me is that, you know, with all the other standards, it's, you know, possible that many of the parcels wouldn't qualify ever for a ministerial review because they couldn't meet all of the standards and build a three-story building. So I, you know, I'll try and come back with a little bit of analysis on that and, and let you know what I think. But, you know, on the face of it, I don't think it's a bad idea unless it has that, you know, negative impact of discouraging development on smaller parcels.
You can still build a single-stair building on, up to three stories though, right? So it doesn't have the same blockiness requirement that a lot of taller buildings have.
I'm sorry, the noise in the background, I didn't hear the first part of what you were saying.
You can still build a single-stair building up to three stories?
I believe so, yeah.
And so the, the constraints on how much land you need to develop on aren't, aren't as bad at three stories?
I, I, I believe you're right and I'll, I'll check in with the building official and make sure that that's accurate. But this was one of the other things that are, when we were consulting with the architect, he was suggesting there are some building types that, you know, similarly sized communities are, are, you know, developers have really honed in on. And there are three buildings, three, three-story building types with a shared stairwell between two units. You know, architecturally, they probably leave a lot to, you know, be desired. But, you know, but they're a cost-effective means for getting, you know, fair amount of moderately dense units onto small sites.
I think they have fire code advantages.
They do have fire code advantages too, yeah.
Perhaps we should send this to the Land of Purple Review.
To the which review?
The Land of Purple Review.
Land of Purple Review, okay. Is everyone okay with that?
The next one is mine as well. Currently, commercial developments don't have a minimum building height. So you could build a one-story new commercial building. Scott and I actually once had a conversation about adding new residential on top of existing commercial buildings, which is, my understanding, it's very, very hard to do because people don't build roofs with the intention of adding new units on top of them in the future. And so I think instead of like, we could still allow, but instead of ministerially permitting one-story commercial buildings, we should be trying to encourage them to add housing on top.
Yeah, I think, I, I totally agree. I think right now, the way that the code is drafted, and I will, I will double check this, but I think the way the code is drafted is that if they came in with a one-story commercial building with no residential and with, and actually you have to get above 25 units per acre on your site before you trigger the ministerial review. So if they did come in as a commercial, single-story build and they didn't meet that 25 unit per, per acre, they would be going for a discretionary approval anyway.
Other commissioners have opinion on this, concerns, questions?
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Thanks, Peter. Dan?
I agree.
Joel?
And there's, there's no problem adding that in as a condition because it, it basically ratifies, you know, the other conditions.
Yeah, it's just footnote one, I think of all four of those tables explicitly exempts commercial buildings from the mid and minimum building height. So we just wanna make sure we got that.
Okay, I will double check that. Yeah, because the, the intent is that, that may be a design, an exemption from the design standard, but not the ministerial pathway standard, if that makes sense.
Strongly support.
Okay.
I think we want to avoid like the Safeway, CVS kind of reality.
Absolutely.
Nothing against Safeway or CVS.
Okay, so this goes into my next, my next one. So currently the minimum residential density is 25 units per acre. That's not actually that high. You could get to that with, you know, a bunch of single-family units and ADUs on, you know, relatively normal sized lot. And so if other commissioners are up to it, I would suggest we increase that.
Go ahead, Peter.
I don't know, Matt. You could get 25 units per acre with just ADUs? I don't think so. They're pretty darn small, if that's true.
I wish Colin Fiss from CRTP was here because he's the one who talked me through it. He looked at his house, which is on, you know, like a quarter, like a, less than a quarter acre, right, and it's one unit. And then he has an ADU in the back, right? Like you could, you could get up there not, you could get close to there with existing one-story, single-family plus ADU.
Can we hear why staff has proposed 25 units per acre?
25 is, 25 units per acre is the, you know, is, is sort of like middle upper end of high density under our current zoning. And so you can imagine, you know, a project that was slightly less dense than, say, the, you know, Kramer projects, typical Kramer project or, you know, our typical apartment building, being able to meet that threshold on a, on a standard, single-family residential, you know, it's probably, you know, point one to point three acres. And so you'd see, you know, somewhere between, you know, three and, three and five units on a 7,000 square, 5,000, 5,000 to 6,000 square foot, you know, parcel. So just, just to give you some context around that. And so, you know, certainly if you wanted to increase the density, I mean, I, I think economically, the way that this would play out is that most people would, you know, cross that 25 unit per acre threshold by the time they're building a building of this size anyway. And so there's, there's probably no harm on the upper end of increasing that density. And then on the lower end of the parcel sizes, you know, there's probably no harm also because, you know, you can easily get three units on, on a 7,000 square foot acre, 7,000 square foot parcel rather. And you can probably just as easily get, you know, five or six, especially if you don't have a parking standard, if there's no parking minimum.
How many units per acre is this rural place?
I would have to, I, I knew that off the top of my head at one time. I would have to calculate it again for you. So if you wanna hang tight, I can, I can do that on the fly.
Okay. Thanks.
That, that sounds about right, about 66. That, that sounds familiar. If you want me to double check, but I would, I would, I would take Brad's word for it.
Yeah, and so that gives you a sense of the minimum is currently 25. So it'd be less than half of a rural place.
Which would mean not necessarily a shorter building, just could be luxury or larger units or something, right? Or a big courtyard.
That's true.
Yeah, I'm worried that we're just gonna have, you know, wall-to-wall buildings and not enough room for open space and walkways and things like that. I mean, 25 units per acre is a lot, I think.
The, the standards for, you know, open space and all of those are, they still apply. So, you know, we, we've built in, you know, what I would consider fairly generous requirements for, you know, open space, in particular, public open space and those, you know, publicly accessible open space in those areas where we did, you know, those requirements. So, you know, the, the intent all along has been to try and create a, you know, code that both provides high density, but also, you know, a, you know, quality of life that, you know, that we expect to come out of, of, you know, ARKADA. So, you know, I, I would just provide that feedback. I mean, 25 units is, is a fairly low threshold. But I think the, you know, when we were setting that, the idea was that we wanted, wanted it to be high enough to where you, you weren't triggering these ministerial reviews for very low-density projects, but low enough to where the, you know, they didn't hinder the housing production on, you know, not, not knowing fully how this would apply on every single site. Another point of reference for your, your thinking is that the current high-density maximum is 32 units per acre. And so, you know, if you wanted to set it at, and, and there has been, I, I can't remember the last project that came in at, under the maximum density. You know, so there's definitely a market for that. And so if you wanted to change this to 32 units per acre, that would also kind of fall in line with the inclusionary zoning trigger.
David, if, if it were 25 units per acre, do we reach the goal of 3,500 units in the gateway area?
I mean, there's still...
Does this come in under that?
Yeah, to hit 3,500 units in the, in the gateway area, number one, it's gonna take decades and decades. But number two, it, it would require basically maximizing the build-out on every single parcel. And I haven't done an analysis recently, excuse me, to, to look at the unit count for, you know, for the reduced building heights that the planning commission is working off of right now. So that, that would probably affect it to some extent. And, and then again, because we're not regulating unit sizes, I guess the other thing I would say is that, you know, if, if the market really drove towards, you know, 3,500 one-bedroom units, you could probably still get there. I don't think the market is gonna sustain one-bedroom units or, you know, the full 3,500 units that, that are projected.
Matt, there was just a suggestion that if we go to 32, we would hit...
I think 32 is better than 25.
Joel, did you have a comment there?
In David's remarks, he answered the question I was gonna ask about whether, whether there's any limitation on the size, number of bedrooms per unit. And he said, that's not regulated.
Yeah, currently we don't have that regulated. It's left up to the market. There are certainly some jurisdictions that do regulate. We used to have a code that would strongly incentivize having larger bedrooms. So it's certainly something to discuss, but the, the philosophy to date has been to let the market decide when it's time to build one-bedrooms and when it's time to build, you know, three-bedrooms.
I just listened to a podcast about how San Francisco is getting rid of all of those requirements because every time a developer wanted to build anything, they couldn't exactly match up the like two-bedroom, three-bedroom, one-bedroom to what, you know, the city was requiring. I, I, I don't want to start playing god like that.
Well, I'm not hearing a super clear...
I'd support that.
Straw poll?
Yeah, sure.
Yes. Joel?
That's fine.
Okay. Proposal passes.
So the next one, it's in the eligibility section and you can currently become eligible either through now 32 units per acre or a minimum lot coverage. And I, I think it should be both. And I, I don't, unless staff has a thought on this, I don't entirely understand why, why we would want just a minimum lot coverage without the residential units.
And I'm, I'm sorry, these came in late, so I didn't...
It's 9.29020B3A.
Oh, okay, yeah. So the, the reason why there's an either/or is because the 32 units, and this is more true now that we've raised the, the unit count. Or I'm sorry, this is, yeah, maybe less true that we've raised the unit count. But I, I couldn't be sure on every parcel. But if you, you, it's possible that you would get to 32 units per acre with one unit. This is true of many of the, you know, depending, if you have a very small parcel, you know, one unit might get you there. That, you know, you, based on the size of the parcel, you, you don't get over less than one or maybe you get two. And then, so let's say you have two units. If you were required to have two-thirds of the, the building and you had maybe, you know, you know, far of like up to two, let's say, I know we don't have floor-to-air ratio in here, but, and the full ground floor is commercial, then you basically are requiring them to build, you know, a much larger area. It just seems like on smaller parcels, it may not work quite right. Having them both be two-thirds of the building area and 32, 32 units per acre. I could, I could work through a couple of examples like that and try and bring those back next time and see if I can find parcels where it just wouldn't work. And then you can, you know, make up your mind at that point.
Everyone okay with that?
That might be helpful.
Purple Review?
All right, here's the other conversation we were gonna have about upper-story stepbacks. Because, I don't know, I'm, my biggest concern is housing. You know, we have a lot of community members who can't find anywhere to live or are living in unsafe conditions. And so anything we can do, I think, to make sure that this housing actually gets built and is reasonably affordable is really important. I totally understand that there's, you know, concerns about shade on existing buildings. But I just, I want us to have the conversation about making sure that what we're requiring doesn't, you know, ask too much.
Other commissioners have questions or comments about Matt's proposal to eliminate enhanced upper-story setback requirements?
I like them. I, I like them for two reasons. One is shading, obviously, and the other is I think they look better. And I think they would make a more attractive neighborhood. So I like the way buildings look when they have stepbacks.
Joel?
Yeah, I, I generally am in favor of stepbacks. I mean, the only thing that could change my mind if someone would tell me that nothing would be built or we wouldn't get enough, you know, buildings built because of that stepback, because of the economic cost was too high. But, you know, I'm loathe to support something that, you know, has deleterious effect on neighbors and, you know, sun, I think sunlight is important.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great topic and because we all, housing is our biggest goal of this whole project. But I've, the stepbacks have really helped me embrace what the gateway is gonna feel like in the future. I'll have a hard time giving it up, although I look forward to hearing from the architect and getting, as Joel said, some financial reality to this. If buildings aren't built, we haven't accomplished much.
Thanks, Dan. We have talked a number of times about having a calculator, as it were, that would give us an ability to weigh the buildability of projects vis a vis certain community benefits or requirements. Do we, are we closer to knowing when we'll be able to toggle around with that kind of a tool?
Yeah, so I believe you're referring to the dashboard that the Turner Lab is building for us. And I'm committing to getting them the data this week that they'll need to start working on that tool. And so I think, you know, we'll be, we'll be seeing that in the coming months. We also had the conversation with Ben Noble, our code writer, and then Urban Field Studies, the architect we're working with, about bringing on an economist that Urban Field Studies works with quite often. And we'd be able to do this by, you know, shifting some of Ben's scope over to, you know, this, this additional scope for, you know, the, this economic analysis on the sites that we're doing test designs for. And I think that would be really useful because we really, we really can't say, I mean, the architect basically said he felt like the step backs, number one, they had to start above four stories because that's sort of where there's a break in the building code in terms of, you know, cost of development. And our code currently has them, you know, starting above four stories, so I think we're in alignment there. And then the, you know, the, the upper floor setbacks, he felt like were really going to impact the viability of, you know, development. And one of the things I, I really want to take a close look at before giving up on the idea of upper floor step backs or reducing them, or, you know, having some sort of impact like that, is, you know, how many sites could actually take advantage of these? Because I think it's, it's really a limited number of sites that are going to be able to develop at densities that are high enough to where they might be able to, you know, shoulder that cost. It may mean that everything on, you know, levels five, six, seven, or whatever the district allows for, you know, are super high-end, you know, condos. But, you know, given the economics, that might be the case regardless. You know, that, that, you know, folks with those, those added views, you know, you're not going to see your lowing, lower income, you know, inclusionary zoning units on the, on the top floor. So I, I, I do think it's, it's a conversation that we need more information on, and it's, it's worth exploring. And, you know, considering not just, you know, the economic impact of the buildings, but also the, you know, impact on, on, you know, nearby community members, you know, as the purpose for, for developing them in the first place.
David, we've seen pictures of buildings that have step backs. I mean, people have built them, could, I mean, there, it must be known what they cost. I mean, could we, could we talk to a developer or, or a few developers and, you know, hear from the horse's mouth what we're talking about here?
Yeah, I, I, we are going to have the architect come, so I'd say your first opportunity is going to be to hear from him and, and talk to him about it. But I think the answer you're going to hear is that there are really different economies in, you know, these different areas. If you're in downtown San Francisco, you can afford to build a 20-story building. It, it pencils, you know, it makes sense. And in fact, you're going to tear down that 20-story building in two years to build a, you know, 30-story building because the economics work out. And so a lot of it has to do with land value. A lot of it has to do with the, you know, the income in the area and what the market will bear in terms of rents and other variables that, you know, we, you know, currently, I can tell you, there is no way that, you know, someone would be able to come in and pencil a four-story building, you know, without bringing in, you know, folks from out of the area that are, you know, the incomes from folks that are out of the area.
A four-story building?
Excuse me?
A four-story building?
Seven-story. Did I say four-story?
Yeah, you said four.
I meant seven-story. Above a four-story building. Build above a four-story building. Thank you for that clarification. So it, you know, I know this is a little vague and it's, it's not grounded in, you know, in strict numbers, but I think the, the answer is that there are really different economies going on in other areas. And so what the architect was reflecting on was based on the economy in your area, I don't think you're ever going to see one of these built if you have this requirement for a step back. To which I would respond, as I've responded to, you know, many other, you know, reflections on, you know, the economy, the current economy, is that our economy is going to continue to change. And, you know, the, the land values may increase, the, you know, incomes may increase over time, the, you know, building costs may come down. I mean, I think that we're in such a critical crisis now, this isn't just in Arcata where it's almost impossible to build a market rate project. This is all over the state. And, you know, you're, you're seeing, you know, a couple of developers, you know, able to build higher density projects right now. And, you know, a lot of that is based on, you know, you know, land cost savings that they've, they've procured. But we're just not seeing a whole lot of interest in our area right now for, you know, for large-scale development. But I think that will change. And I think that, you know, the state is, is likely to, you know, start taking a hard look at this. I mean, for every bill that comes out that tries to, you know, streamline development and reduce the cost of getting a project to market, there's, you know, counter, you know, law that comes out that, you know, increases the cost of development because of, you know, building code standards or, you know, energy requirements or, you know, various other things. So, you know, it's, I think at some point, the state is going to have to do some leveling and, and, you know, new technologies are going to come out that'll assist us with that with, with the cost of development as well. Right now, we're starting to see, Cal Poly actually is going to be the first locally-built mass timber product. And so we may start to see more mass timber. You know, one of their buildings, I don't recall off the top of my head which one, is going to be a mass timber building. I believe it's one of the ones on campus. It's going to be a mix, mixed-use building. So we'll, you know, we'll start to see these changes and, and that may change the economies. For right now, I think, you know, in the near term, we're likely to see, you know, more three and four-story buildings, you know, that are more affordable, affordable to build. And so we're not going to have to cross that threshold. So ask, that was a long way of saying, asking folks from outside, how do you get these things built? They're going to say, well, you know, the, you know, average, the median income in my community is, you know, $200,000. And, and that's how I can afford to build them.
Yeah, I think the, the problem, the, the danger with making that kind of assessment is it's based on now. And we're trying to put together a plan that's going to last for 20 years. And so it's impossible to say, really, how things are going to change. And I don't want us to limit ourselves in what we envision for the gateway because of the limitations of builders or economics in 2023. That seems silly.
Yes, I agree. I, I hear what you're saying. But hearing from real people doing real projects is really, i- it's still going to be, I don't know, very useful, I think.
If I can just add one more thing. We, we had a conversation earlier about the trade-offs between inclusionary zoning requirements and the community benefits program. And to the extent that these step backs will limit development above four stories because they become cost-effective, we would also be limiting community benefits because a lot of those kick in above four stories. And so just as we're thinking about this, I think we should keep that part of it and might as well that it's, we actually want them to get up that height because we want those community benefits.
What are we talking about here? If, if indeed somebody built, say, a five or a six-story building, and there's now a step back requirement, how much more expensive is that building compared, is that 5% more expensive? 50% more expensive? What, where are we?
We just don't know. And at this point, without knowing, I, my vote is to not make this change, not to give up the concept of step backs.
Yeah, I agree, Dan.
I have a hard time letting go of the step back concept because it's, it's been core to how we presented this project aesthetically and in a way that sort of addresses a whole other piece. As I hear what you're saying about the economics and the buildability, there's, there's no, there's just no denying that that's true. But I think the trade-off to the community and it's just too hard for me to swallow right now.
Yeah, I, I'm on board with that, Scott.
Okay, and as I mentioned earlier, we're going to have the architect here next time as the plan, and they'll, they'll be able to weigh in and let you know a little bit more insights into why they said that.
Sorry, I have so many guys, but I think you'll like this one better. I, I don't think, I don't think we should have garage doors opening up onto main public streets as is currently allowed. I think they should open up onto alleys.
I, I thought it wasn't allowed. I, I read it to not be allowed.
It limited how wide they could be and how frequently, but-
Well, I, I totally agree with you, Matt.
Do you have a packet page there?
That's not the packet page. That's the, of the code as it was given to us originally. It is... Packet page 48.
So right now, so on packet page 48, under I2A, reads that garage doors serving individual units may not face a public street. Such garage doors must be oriented toward an alley or private street driveway that is internal to the project.
So that, that one, that's limited to individual units? Yeah.
So what you're saying is to, if there's a garage entrance to a building, specify that those don't go onto public streets also?
Yeah, and the reason for that is if we're trying to create a welcoming pedestrian environment, we don't want, you know, cars coming in and out of a garage through the sidewalk, bike lane, you know, outdoor table seating at a restaurant, all that sort of stuff.
Yeah, and we did include a, we did include a requirement around the Creamery District that, 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 around the Creamery Building, excuse me, that that be the case. And that we would require those internal drive aisles to, you know, that basically create easements that, that create alleyways. The challenge is, without formalizing those in advance, you may have a property that's islanded. So if you're in the middle, you don't have access to a side street. There may be no way to develop that property if you don't allow access to the front. I think it's a really good idea, and we got excited about this when we, when we landed on it. And I think it's, it, it's worth thinking through how that, that would actually work in practice. And, you know, maybe part of that is, you know, trying to work with property owners in advance to try and establish those easements. It's really difficult when you have all the legacy land uses to, you know, to orient everything, but I think it's worth the work to try and, you know, arrive at that.
If I can just, so imagine the plaza right now, right? We wouldn't want a garage opening onto the main central part of the plaza. We'd want it on one of the side, you know, sort of alley streets that are around the plaza. And so this, all I was trying to do was sort of get that in the language before anything gets proposed.
Yeah, we, we have, you know, fortunately, alleyways all around the plaza. There's actually a historic alleyway that goes right through the Jacobi Storehouse. So there used to be an alley that went all the way through there. Now it, you know, does an L-bend. So I think if we can, you know, try and write some standard that, I think the way to accomplish this is to write a standard that requires, you know, access through access so that you're starting to create the, you know, the easements. And then we would try and work with those individual property owners. We'd have to, you know, we'd have to get pretty creative about, around those islanded properties, though. If they wanted to come in and develop, you know, you'd have to tell them, no, I'm sorry, you can't develop until you can get an easement to your property through the back.
They could develop without parking, though.
They could develop without parking.
And someone else could build a garage on an alley. And someone could perk at that other garage and then walk to their building without having to drive their car right up to their front door.
That is true.
So are you saying that staff is going to look at this more and bring this back to us? Is that part of what I'm hearing you articulate?
Yeah, and so I guess one question, just to clarify, is to, is the proposal to have throughout the entire Gateway District, no on-street access? Or right now, we currently have a provision that it, around the Creamery Building, those blocks facing the Creamery would not have access onto the streets, 8th, 9th, and et cetera?
I, I personally feel it could apply to the entire district. And that, I'm not saying there's no garages. They would just have to find a way to not be going through main public streets.
Matt, I'm, this is counterintuitive to your goal of developing housing in that, you know, some islanded properties or challenging situations where a developer has to then suddenly put in a lane or something down the whole side of their building so that you can come in from the backside and take away square footage to potential units. I mean, I get the sentiment of nobody wants to be walking down the street and have cars going in a garage. I get that sentiment a lot. As David's describing, as, as I think it through, it just feels like this could create some unbuildable kind of situations or less units.
I mean, I like the trade-off personally for bikeability and walkability. If we can find a way to feel reasonably secure that we won't be islanding certain portions, I would be supportive with more information as to how I would characterize my vote.
Yeah, as an avid cyclist, it's a real danger to have a garage where a car can pull out into the street and not see you.
Yeah, I, I agree. Here's, here's a, you know, specific example. So one of the, one of the sites that we did as a test site was this property here. It's, you know, got a lot of vacant space, you know, it, it, you know, doesn't have any, you know, other constraints. It's fairly readily develop, developable. Here's the Creamery Building itself. And this is, you know, the open door offices are in here. There's the community garden back here. So the project design does show covering the community garden. I'm, you know, not suggesting that's what we want to do, but we're just trying to test the, the code here. And so when the architect put the building on this, they put the entrance from the front here, you know, as we were talking about it, we said, you know, well, that conflicts with the, the code that we just put in this provision that, you know, facing onto the Creamery, there would be no penetrations. And then we started looking at it, and the only way to get here, you know, the only other way to get here, you know, currently, you know, readily is by, you know, extending 7th Street, which means that there's another crossing for the, the trail. You know, and so we, there's, there's a lot of problems, like, you know, as you start to look at this practically, I think that I, I think I would recommend that we require a joint access along, you know, joint property lines here. Even though this creates a new penetration, maybe it would clean up a couple of other penetrations egress, and it would preserve the, the crossing here, yeah. I mean, we've already got, you know, so, so, you know, as we think about the, you know, future state, you know, 8th, 9th Streets, you know, becoming one ways, and this area developing and becoming more vibrant means that there's going to be more traffic. Right now, you can just about roll through these, you know, as a bicyclist, you can just about roll through these. There's almost nobody, you know, on these. You can slow down, slow down, look both ways. You don't have to stop and wait for traffic often. And the other nice thing is that, you know, drivers, I've found, are typically courteous, and they'll stop for you. They don't have to stop. They'll stop for you on that trail. So this is a very enjoyable, you know, trail right now and, and way to bike. We have, you know, 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th that are already crossing. 8th and 9th are proposed for, you know, one-way egress. With more traffic on here, I just don't know that we want to start opening up additional, you know, points of egress. You know, there's, there's another one right here, and this is proposed currently in- in the circulation plan to have, you know, uh, you know, to merge onto, you know, L Street. So there, there may be some refinements as we look at this in more detail on a parcel by parcel basis that we'll want to implement. So I, I only throw that out there as, you know, food for thought when you're thinking about, you know, how do we get these, how do we eliminate access points on one area and, and, you know, what does that do if we open them up on another area?
So could the wording be something about, um, strongly discouraging or, I don't know, or not allowing unless, you know, situational, uh, you know, circumstances mandate? I don't know.
Well, this is the code, so if somebody wants to do it and you say in the code strongly discouraged, they're going, they can do it. So I, I think we need to be more specific.
Um, I, I, I kind of would lean to putting this in the purple pending maybe staff working through, looking at how much of an issue this looks like it's going to be to give us a better idea of how much property we might put at risk by doing something like this. Um, that would give us a better, uh, data set to weigh this out if everyone's okay with that.
Yeah, property and/or, as David just pointed out, more trail crossings. We don't want that either.
One or the other, the, the various implications.
Uh, this is me as well, uh, page 50, sorry, page 50 of the Gateway Code. I think that would translate to, um, 58 of the packet. Uh, we, it ties bicycle biking, parking requirements to, uh, car parking requirements and I, I don't think we should do that. Um, and then this actually kind of goes together with my next proposal, uh, which is that we, um, make the employment and residential use bike parking requirements listed in table two thirty-four, uh, as clarified as requiring long-term weather protected and secure parking spaces. Um, yeah.
Questions, comments, concerns from other commissioners?
How many bicycles? I'm all in favor of requiring bicycle park, parking, uh, but how do we impose that as a requirement?
Could have it based on the number of dwelling units or, um, you know, square footage of, uh, you know, commercial space. There, there are certainly some proposals we can come back with.
Yeah, and there, there already is some language like that in there and it's, uh, yeah, 58 bicycle facilities has some language like that already.
Sounds great. Table twelve thirty-four speaks to that.
In favor, Peter, I'm presuming?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Dan in favor, Joel, everyone, this is, is this an easy one? I think everyone's in favor of this.
Um, okay, uh, the community square section, uh, currently requires that the square face two streets. Uh, and so you couldn't build a community square that isn't on two streets. Um, when I was thinking about this, I was sort of thinking about some European cities where there are community squares that you can't actually drive right up to. You just sort of walk in and then it's like, oh wow, that's a great community space that has no cars on it. Um, and I'm not saying we have to require that, I'm just saying we don't require that the square, yes.
Yeah, and I, I think that was the intent, uh, originally in the policy document, so staff fully supports that.
Great, I think that would be cool.
Um, the next one, uh, we've got a lot of requests from the public to rename the sub-districts in consultation with the Wiat tribe, uh, and I am in favor of that if other commissioners are.
Um, what was staff's, um, response?
We, we've spoken with the, um, Wiat tribe, um, and they are interested in, um, in, and supportive of us renaming or naming, um, you know, things based on, on Wiat place names or, or Wiat names. Um, I, I would say that, you know, we should be open to, you know, whatever participation that they want to, um, you know, engage in and, um, you know, to the extent that they want to. Um, so I, you know, I don't know if, you know, renaming the districts themselves are, um, you know, what they'll be interested in renaming or if they'll want street names or, you know, or what, you know? So, so I, I guess I would offer that, yes, let's be open to, to it. I think it's a, um, you know, a good, good call overall.
And when we say be open, does that mean invite them to a conversation? What does be open?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've already initiated the conversation and I would say that, you know, if they have a desire to, you know, name things in Arcata their ancestral territory, um, while we're, you know, going around naming things and we should, you know, be open and all, and help, you know, let them have first dibs on what that thing would be called.
Yeah. Any other commissioners, questions or?
No, it sounds like a great conversation to have.
Everyone's in support of that.
But not specifically that because it could be something much broader than that.
Because we don't know which way that conversation with the tribe will go.
Yeah. You okay with that friendly modification?
Yes. Um, okay, there's a non-residential transportation demand management table, uh, and there was a requirement that the commercial developments use some of these strategies. And all I want to do is clarify that that is not an exhaustive list of, uh, demand management strategies. Uh, it's on page forty-eight of the, uh, document as it was originally given to us.
Fifty-six, I think.
Thank you.
We're eight pages ahead.
That's helpful.
Staff, you?
No, I mean, I think it's a good idea.
Anyone opposed to this idea? Everyone supports.
Um, so currently there's a minimum street tree spacing, but no maximum street tree spacing. And I, I suggest we add a, sorry, I'm, I'm getting tongue tied. We add a maximum street tree spacing.
The minimum was thirty feet, right?
Yeah, and so with no maximum, you could just have like one tree there.
Yeah, that was, uh, pointed out as a good catch, you know?
Go ahead, Peter.
Um, I, I noted that, uh, somewhere else when we're, as we're talking about trees, it said, uh, "Street tree species shall be consistent along each street." And, uh, I thought that wasn't necessary or even desirable that all the trees on the street be the same.
I could see it either way. There's parts of Eureka, right, Third Street, where there's a super mismatch of trees and they don't look, I, I think they chose some inappropriate species, so the grander isn't there.
Yeah.
It's kind of a scrawny look. Um, I don't know. As long as they're robust.
Yeah, but they don't, they don't all have to be the same.
So where, where, where are we landing on this, um, with the maximum tree spacing? And I guess the wording is a little tricky when I think maximum, I think the concern is that we're going to end up with like too many trees, but it's, it's really the opposite.
Well, shouldn't the maximum be thirty feet?
Yeah, I, I would offer that, um, you know, I, I hear what the commission is trying to get at and so if we could turn this one purple and we'll come back with some, some language, um, to try and accomplish what you're trying to do to, as a starting point, unless you have a specific recommendation.
Very good. Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, twenty-seven we already covered and then twenty-eight I already made as a suggestion earlier and staff said they'd have to, uh, look into it. Uh, and I think that's the end of mine, so thanks for putting up with my long list of suggestions.
Thanks for all the thoughtful comments, Matt. Good conversations.
So, um, the next set of changes were recommended by Commissioner Mayor. Um, she'll be back at our next meeting. I might offer that in particular because of the, um, time and, um, the fact that she may want to represent these, um, that maybe we hold these over till next time.
Agreed, I'm sure she would like to represent.
Yeah.
And is that the end of the prepared comments for that portion?
Uh, that is.
Do you mind, uh, scrolling up on that one? So the other direction, sorry, just to the bottom, I just want to see how far we have to go.
Twenty-nine.
Right, yeah.
Ten more, once Judith gets back.
Yeah.
And the rest of the comments to review are Judith's.
Correct.
So given that, I think we hit the pause button and pick this up at our next meeting. Okay, I appreciate everyone's work, uh, this evening with all this. Um, I would like then to move now to Correspondence and Communications. Do we have any correspondence from Planning Commission members this evening? Seeing none, any correspondence from staff?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of quick, uh, reminders. Number one, um, uh, and you mentioned it earlier Chair, but our next meeting on July eleventh will be a regular meeting, it will start at 5:30. Um, and so that's when your resolution said to start those. Um, and then also just to put in, um, you know, just to, to daylight this, the, the Planning Commission, I believe, will, um, have only one meeting per month, starting in August. Uh, August, September and October, you have, uh, joint study sessions scheduled for your second meeting of the month. And then for the remainder of the year, um, the dates fall on the week of Thanksgiving or the winter break. Um, and so, you know, we'll be bringing forward a, um, you know, an action next time to talk about, uh, canceling some meetings, just so you can take that formal action, but I just wanted to put that out there and let people know that's happening.
David, you said there are three joint meetings with the?
There are currently.
Cause I remember seeing only two.
Yeah, there are currently, uh, joint meetings scheduled for, uh, second meeting in August, September and October. Um, there is s- some discussion about, you know, potentially adding a special meeting on a date that, uh, of a current regularly scheduled planning, uh, city council meeting. So I'll update you on that as that, uh, formalizes. I'll make sure you have those dates. They're on regular, they're on regular, uh, Planning Commission dates, so you, you will be planning to be here anyway, I suspect.
Yeah.
So they're the, the fourth.
Fourth Tuesday.
Tuesday of August, September and October.
Yes.
Uh, so some of our homework was to look at that document where staff has sort of guessed how we'll vote on suggestions. And I'm wondering if we can get that document as a standalone document, uh, and not just have it in the packet.
Yeah, I will send it out to you, uh, individually, you will send it back to me and I will compile them and we'll take a look at them, um, at your next meeting. So you'll, you'll want to send those back to me at the latest by, say, early afternoon of the eleventh.
Jen?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
David's going to be out, could you copy myself or Dilo on that?
And we'll, we'll send you those instructions.
We'll send you that reminder.
Thanks, Jen.
Sorry, back to Jen, early on the eleventh? Is that what I just heard?
Yeah, we'll send, we'll send those to you in, in the email, the instructions on how to return them.
Okay, great, and when you want them?
Yeah.
Okay, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.